Sheldon Lyon.
President.
Counselor Susan Stone.
Here.
Counselor Dick Wells.
Here.
Counselor Tom Mallon.
Here.
Counselor Robert Orr.
Here.
And for the record, Counselor Alan Montgomery is absent and excused.
Excellent. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This time I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Oh, so moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing amendments approved. Consent agenda. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing amendments approved. All right. Announcements and correspondence.
Okay, on March 20th at 5:00 PM here at City Hall, tsunami experts will come down from the Office of Emergency Management and discuss tsunamis and their impacts with local citizens. It will be a casual question-and-answer format meeting and should prove to be informative to everyone who attends. A town hall meeting with the City Council regarding public safety concerns will be held on Wednesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM, where all Dune City residents are welcome to come discuss public safety concerns with the City Council, Lane County Sheriff, Sergeant Michael Brewster of the Oregon State Police, and Florence Police Chief Tom Turner. A budget committee meeting is scheduled for April 24th, 2018 at 5:00 PM, at which time we will review the third quarter of fiscal year 2017-2018 and introduction of the budget meeting scheduled for the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget adoption cycle. Also, there's one more note written on the agenda, and that is Darlins Marina is excited to announce that they will be having their fireworks again this year on Saturday, June 30th at approximately 10 o'clock. And they, of course, are looking for contributions for the local fireworks show again.
We did that last year to determine $500.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
No business.
I have to report that the Lane Act representative must be a City Council elected official. However, an elected official can appoint someone in their stead and only has to show up once in a while. So we can figure out a way to have an individual citizen attend those meetings on behalf of the City Council and come back and report.
Super. That's probably something that we ought to be thinking about and pass on your thoughts to Jamie over the next week or so, anybody that you might think would be a good idea. It's a, again, like I said, it's a really, really good place to go. It's a good place to meet people. Very educational as far as how these monies are allocated, how they're derived. And almost every mayor in Lane County is there, various people from different organizations like 126 East, all the special people that thing. So it is really interesting. So, yeah, let's think about who we might be able to coerce into. And to the people don't know, their meeting is the same night as our meeting, so that's the difficulty in breaking us loose. Super. Thank you.
No business.
We have two openings on the Budget Committee. We have one application that was in your packet and one application that came in. And the one in your packet is Rory Hammond. The one that came in today is Craig, or yesterday, Craig Zalesi. And conveniently, we have two openings and we have two applicants.
That works out.
Mr. Hammond is here. If you wish to pump him for information.
Yeah, Rory, why don't you come up and sit down.
Oh, wait. Are you available here?
I'll try to talk about it if I don't.
There you go. Sounds good.
My name is Rory Hammond. I recently moved here. I live on 4910 Darlins Loop. I do have roots here in Florence. I just realized that you were a wrestling coach. When I was a kid, I actually wrestled unlimited player at Florence, and I also wrestled unlimited guy in Fableton. My father actually owned property here on Upper Arrowville, and I used to spend lots of time down here. And so I'm 50 years later, so I'm back. And I have, I was on the Columbia County Budget Committee last year. I have had lots of budgeting experience. I hope I can learn a lot here and maybe offer some help.
Do you live on Darlins Loop?
Yep. Just a lot of place there.
Where?
Oh, about three docks down further than Darlins.
Port Village?
Port, uh, port, uh, east. East of Darlins. Darlins, Darlins Loop is west, east-west. I'm east of there, just past.
Oh. Pretty close to you.
He's north of my area.
I'm at corner of Pioneer Darlins Loop.
Well, I'm past it, yes.
Just west of that.
So I'll have to keep my eye out.
Yeah.
I believe Darlins is having a big event, I think it's Friday. It's a chamber conference. Was it tomorrow?
Tomorrow. Thursday is their after-hours, chamber after-hours. Yeah, it's a, it's a good way to get to know the different chamber members.
I actually know Rich and Rory. I stayed there for, I had my fifth wheel there for a month before I, so.
Cool. Yeah, I bought my property the same time they bought their property, so we were brand-new together. Excellent. Glad to hear you're willing to help. We always like that. Thank you, Rory.
So we have two openings and two candidates.
Makes it pretty easy.
Yeah. I need approval of both.
Second. Any discussion? Last chance to back out. All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you for welcoming. Traveling County Membership Dues.
Yes, in the past, we have been a member of Traveling County. They've been very helpful to us in getting the word out on the tri-due. And so I just, the dues are $195 a year, and I just want to confirm that it's okay, even though I can make that decision because it's under the certain amount. I just wanted to confirm, make sure it's okay with you guys to go ahead and do that again. We did not attend the conference this year feeling like maybe it didn't help us as much as we hoped in the past, but they do help us a lot.
I think their advertising and stuff works really well for everybody in here.
Members of presentation that, I don't remember if they came by, it was very informative and they do a lot.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I see no problem with it, and I think we need to do that. You don't need a motion on that then.
No, I don't.
No, she has her.
Because I have the authority to pay that anyway. Next item?
Yeah, please.
We received a letter that is in your packet, I believe, or should be in your packet, from our auditors, Hattie McHattan, Fisher and Gorman. Our auditor that we have worked with so closely for so many years is retiring, and as you can see from the letter, they're having a hard time finding qualified staff to take her place that they feel comfortable in assigning to do something as complicated as the city. And so they've made some recommendations that we contact other entities and give us a few names to contact. I wasn't sure. We had to put it out to bid, so I'm now waiting a decision from our attorneys as to whether I have to put it out to bid, but I thought I can just send letters and inquire.
Typically, the ability to go out to bid is limited also to how many miles and things. We have enough in town that you should be able to do an open letter to three or more, take those results, and make your decision from that, what's bid type of thing.
I need to check with the Secretary of State's office. There are only certain accountants that are qualified to do city stuff, and they have a list on their website. And I haven't checked to see if there are any locally.
Quickest thing is just call them.
Yeah.
What's her name? What's her name?
Who?
Erin.
Oh, Erin.
Yeah.
I know who they use.
Yeah. Erin and Deana. So you've got special districts, and you've got the, oh, yeah, you've got two special districts, Fire Department, Port, and City.
And Hacito.
Yeah, so, yeah, grab those, because it's, you know, they're in high demand. I know the one that the Port was using did the same thing, retired last year. So they're, you know, Deana's going to be looking for people too, so.
Okay. Maybe she's, maybe she out-started before I did and asked some information.
Exactly. Yeah, that's sometimes not easy.
All right. Just wanted to give you the heads up on that.
Yeah, thank you.
I need a budget without an auditor.
Yeah. Well, sometimes you can do a review versus a, did we do a review last time, or did we? About every couple of years, you can do a review rather than a full-blown audit.
We are able to do a review, and the policy that's been set by the city is to do a review for four years and then have an audit.
And then do a full-blown audit, whole lot cheaper, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Our last full-blown was this last year?
Last year.
Yeah.
Excellent. Cool. I like that. And that's going to make a difference when you make phone calls, too.
Okay. I'll bear that in mind.
Yeah, they're going to like that. Request for approval of expenditures required for grant application.
Right. We are making an application for a grant from Land Conservation. I can't remember exactly what the name of the grant is, so don't quote me on that. Anyway, it is for acquisition of property. And because it's for acquisition of property, part of the grant application, we have to submit an audit, I mean, I mean, an appraisal. Now, it doesn't, thankfully, it's not federal money, so it doesn't have to be a yellow book appraisal just yet. So for purposes of the grant, it can be a regular appraisal, but it looks like it's going to cost about $1,500 for us to do that. And there, of course, is no guarantee that we're going to get the grant. An appraisal would be good for a couple of years, so it would carry over to future grants. And I, believe me, I'm going to be hitting this pretty hard every chance I get to see if I can get funding to do this. So I am asking for, because that is over my amount. I'm asking for approval to pay to order that appraisal so that we can move forward with the grant application.
That was a good idea.
Yeah.
Is budgeted under the tourism dollars?
Yeah. Go for it.
Can I get a motion?
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Who moved that?
Discussion.
Okay, Sheldon, there?
Discussion.
I've been picked one from Sheldon, all right.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved.
Thank you.
Was Tom clearing his nose or putting it out?
I'm not quite sure.
Welcome back.
Yeah. Ordinance adding Chapter 123 entitled marijuana business, Title 12 Business Licenses.
This is on the agenda just to introduce you to this new piece of, well, new ordinance, proposed ordinance. If you've had a chance to read it at all, you know that it states that in order to get a business license for marijuana grow in the city limits, you have to have a conditional use permit. It does provide exceptions where businesses already doing business in Dune City, they'll have to get a business license, but they don't have to meet some of the requirements that are set for it in there. But the conditional use permit process for a marijuana producer does not currently exist in Title 15, our land use codes. So before any consideration can be given to that particular ordinance, which is not a land use code, the next ordinance on the agenda would have to be considered, sent to the Planning Commission with instructions to either appoint a new CAC or have it go to the current CAC with directions that they move on equipment.
When I read it, and I'm just thinking now, I don't remember if the verbiage, here it is, I was looking for verbiage that spoke only to recreational growing, because we can't require it for medical.
According to Elkhod, we can. That's why that home rule thing is in there.
But if we require it for medical, but we're not allowed to know where the medical grows are, that makes no sense.
I agree with you. I agree with you that it makes no sense. I'm just using the language that was put forth by the Lane Council Governments and League of Oregon Cities, because there are a lot of cities complaining about that right now. And what I've done with regard to one location apart, the concern with exposing the location of medical grows is security. I mean, you know, it's like you wouldn't want people to know exactly how, you know, Bayer makes aspirin, because then somebody could come in and sabotage it and cause problems. So what I've done in our version that nobody else has done before is say, just provide us evidence to show, because fire and police are allowed, they're allowed to know, they're allowed to know the building for safety reasons, and that information, all I've asked for is that they provide us proof that their security measures and the layout of their building and where their hazardous materials are have been deposited with the local fire department.
That applies in the face of what Deputy Trapp told us, that he's not allowed to know.
He's allowed to know if there is criminal activity. That's the only time. That's really the only time.
Right. Well, if those permits, then he will know that. I mean, see, I'm having a problem, and not that I don't agree with it, that's not my point. I don't want to get us into another situation. I mean, when the Lane County Sheriff is telling us he's not allowed to know this until he calls.
Right, until he gets a call.
Until he gets a call. It kind of doesn't make sense that a permit would be required or public, all permits are public.
Well, I'm glad you bring that up, and, you know, we can restrict the business license to strictly recreational.
At this time, I think we wouldn't until, I mean, I'm sure the whole state's going through this.
Yes. The whole state is, right.
Every town, township, everybody has to be going through all of these things. I would like to see it stated that it's simply recreational until we know the total impact of what the medical issue is or isn't.
I thought, I had to take the same thing, is that I thought it was okay because of the home rule clause that we could pretty much dictate what we wanted in our city limits.
I think we can, but you can't override the state.
Not with the home rule?
I don't believe so. And I mean, our law would be doing it.
That's why that language is there, is to set it up so that it goes to court, so that question can be answered. Because right now, the state, we lost, the cities lost the argument with the state regarding pesticides and agricultural use. We lost that. And so the state overrules. They make all the decisions with regard to pesticides and herbicides and agriculture situation, and there's not a thing we can do about it.
That doesn't carry on, obviously, to federal then. Doesn't overrule state?
Yeah, well, that's a whole different.
Well, the federal issue altogether, yeah.
So.
I still think that we have the hammer, because in each of these, as I read them, there has to be at least 1,000 feet between where children congregate, catch a bus, camp, reside, eat, anything.
That would be new ones. Yeah, it only applies to new ones. It doesn't apply to those that currently exist. But I understand what you're saying, because we aren't even advised when a medical grow is registered in the city.
But to further my point is that if we aren't allowed to know where they are, and they are committing a crime by being closer to children than the law requires, we could bust them, and it's over. And maybe not the existing one, but anyone that's new that doesn't want us to know where they are, if they're not doing it legally, they're doing it illegally.
Only recreational, because.
Okay. Will?
That's the point he's making. Medical is actually protected. They're protected. They don't want, I mean, it specifically says that we're not allowed to release any information that we may know, we're not allowed to talk about it, we're not allowed to let anybody know where they are if we find out.
That sounds right.
So I can understand your concern with regard to medical. My concern was to get something on the books.
Sure.
Because we don't know what's going to happen with Luba, we don't know what's going to happen with the election. There's so many don't know what's going to happen. We make sure that we still, in the language, protect the ones that are doing business right now and approve. But I can see restricting it to recreational producers. Now, processes are different.
Absolutely. Sure.
And you'll see that in the wine, we put processing under commercial activities and, yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with the medical concern.
Anyway, what I'm looking for tonight is, and that's a, you know, recommendation that you send the second ordinance, the zoning regulation ordinance, to the Planning Commission and direct them to either send it to the current CAC, which has already been discussing it.
Good.
Or to have them create a new CAC to look at it and move forward as quickly as possible so that we get something on the books, which, if the ban passes, we just, you know, reveal it, so.
So you mean a motion or just a direction?
Motion would probably be cleaner for the record, but Tom has a question.
I'm reminded of the backlash that we got from the community, and rightfully so, when we passed the tax on marijuana sales, but we don't have any marijuana sales. And here we are debating this, and we have a ban in place. My opinion at this point is it's a non-issue to do the city, none of this applies until such time as the voters vote on it.
Provided the ban stays in place and doesn't get repealed by Luba.
If it happens, it doesn't happen real quick, November 15th or year.
So my opinion, I understand that concern, but my opinion is that we do not act on this based on our ban, whether it's in danger of, you know, blowing up or not, until it becomes an issue. Now it's a non-issue.
Right. It takes nine, it takes three months to pass it. And so if the ban fails, we have three months where people have full right to come in and make application and no way to tell them no.
But that danger would exist no matter what.
No, not if we had this.
Not if the ban fails. If this is in place beforehand, then at least we have a little bit of say on where they take place. And some say on, not really much on how it takes place, but certain requirements that the Planning Commission would say, we've got to see this before we can consider it a full and complete application, so that we can make a determination on a conditional use permit.
I see an attorney representing marijuana growers as telling us that we must be in favor somehow or another of these permits because we voted on this issue.
We're just using the language that every other city that has grows and businesses. I mean, this one was based on the mock ordinance created by the League of Oregon Cities and the city of Florence. That's all I can say. I mean, if you don't want to do it, you want to leave it wide open and subject to whatever happens with the election, I'm okay with that, you know. I just am very, very concerned. You guys say you didn't want marijuana, but if you don't have something in place, that's the reason I had to say yes before, is because we have nothing in place to say no on. There's no reason to be able to say no.
Other than the medical marijuana portion of this, I thought it was very comprehensive, and it was amazing how many levels. If you're reading through this thinking you want to have a marijuana operation, there's a lot of hoops and a lot of tea crops and a nigga that goes on in this, you know. There's a lot of, we didn't have a lot of information. And then a lot of requirements was to have it, that they have to keep and meet throughout the whole time they have a business in Dune City.
Keep us informed.
Jamie, is there something in here, and I'm not sure which one of these I saw it in, but is there something in here that says this does not preclude the ban that's already in existence? In other words, what Tom's worried about is if somebody construed this as our desire or permission to have marijuana grows, and could it then be construed that way? And I'm just saying, can it be worded so that it doesn't override the ban?
Yeah. What I can do is, when it's down in the part where it says effective date.
Mm-hmm, just not dated.
And you put in there an effective date, it only becomes effective, number one, if the ban fails, or if, you know, Luba overturns it, we don't have time to get it on the, if for some reason it gets overturned by litigation, and we don't, yeah, but I'm sure there's some way that we can write that in there. And then it would become effective until then, but then it would be, you know, we can still go through the three-month process to get it approved, and then it sits with an effective date after, and we see what happens on the election.
I'd go along with that. And from what I can see, if I don't make a mistake, in ordinance, new Chapter 123, you just have to wipe out the term "medical" and the rest of it fits on the second where it's on page one.
I think it's probably throughout, anyway, I will double-check.
I have not, I'm scanning it, but I don't see it, so, anyway.
It may be in a definition, it may be, maybe it's say, all right, take it out of the definition, but I'll look at it and see.
All right. So on the portion, you said you want to do Title 15 before we do 123?
We have to do the second ordinance, which is part of Title 15, before we can consider the business licenses.
All right. So in consideration of ordinance amending Title 15, do we have a motion to move forward with that? Yeah, I'll see if I can do this. I move that we approve the second ordinance of the two, referring it to the citizens, to the, what, Planning Commission and either the current Citizens Advisory Court.
Oh, you pick which one?
It's, pardon me?
Pick which one.
Oh, we pick which one. Okay. Then I will say to the existing Citizens Advisory Committee, with the understanding that additional language will be inserted that makes this effective only if the ban is disallowed or if the voters disapprove the ban. That was a bit wordy. I think I got it.
Otherwise, it's the same issue. Without that, I mean.
Right. Exactly.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Was that a motion or?
That was a motion.
That was his motion.
I'll second that motion.
And it included the removal of the medical.
Oh, and I did not, so we need to amend my motion to remove the term "medical" from this ordinance pending further information.
I'll have my second.
And I do have a question before we end this. Jamie, on the issue of the Citizens Advisory Council, what would be the reason, why might we not refer it to, if we have one, why would we refer it to a different?
That's just a marking, you have, and it's a decision you need to make.
I see.
Yeah, that's all. You could either, you know, mandate a new one, and nobody show up, or the same people show up.
Any further discussion?
Counselor Meyer, did you second the amendment?
You did.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, ordinance amending Title 15 passes.
Just a little shorter than. Oh, just a little shorter than Councilor Wells.
Oh, man. All right, then, the question of adding chapter 123.
You can just table that.
Yeah, that's true, we can table that until we find out what's going on with 15. Ah, no public hearings, no executive session, well, that's a first thing to look at. Citizens input, any?
I don't see anything.
Okay. Mayor's report. I did contact the high school wrestling team, and they're gonna try to organize a volunteer group for the triathlon.
Great, thank you.
So we'll see how many we can get to, get to show up.
Did you make sure to tell them that when they called to register as a volunteer, that they're doing it for the wrestling team?
Got it. Not many, we haven't, I haven't done anything in between last meeting.
Well, that's 'cause last meeting was yesterday.
I mean, our last regular meeting, not our, not our last-
What is it going for the last 24 hours?
Right. Slacking off. Councilman Wells, moving to send a report.
Jamie mentioned yesterday something about anchoring our tanks down, that's coming up?
That's Friday morning.
And then after that, we'll be attacking the fireplace, getting that function-
I hope so, I've started looking into it.
Councilor Myers, Meyer, what is the quality?
Well, yes, you have a typical monthly report, and everything's looking good there, the city's solid, and I think we're in good shape. And the other one I had included in your packet was one that I got last month, and thought that it would be interesting to see, and again, it looks like we're doing good and better. I think we're waters good, and I hope everybody gets to have good water, that wants to have good water.
Public Works, Jamie?
We met last night with the town hall meeting on roads. Did you want to say anything, Councilor Wells?
Well, I thought it was a good meeting, and a lot of things were brought to light as far as how we've been, things have been done here historically that have not been up to snuff, and that has got to do with knowing where utilities are, mainly water lines are a big issue. Having an inspection done correctly for like driveways, for, what was the other thing? The driveways, the water, stormwater.
Stormwater.
Stormwater was a big one. Actually having somebody that we can go to, the staff can use, to go out and check on those things, but I think another good point that was brought up was having a pre-construction review with the contractors and seeing what their intentions are, and making sure it's all up to snuff. So we've never done that before. It came to light with a job going to be done, I think by Charter on Little Loane, that wanted to bore underneath, and they had no idea if there were water lines there, so we kinda resolved that last night, I think, by going deeper than anybody puts water stuff on that case. But the point was that we just don't have maps of utility, you know, up-to-date utilities. Part of that is because we've only been a city since 63, and other things that were here, we have no idea.
Oh, that's true.
But it was a good-
I was gonna, I was gonna mention that, that truth, that anything prior to 63, we don't have a clue. And I thought that staff did a really good job of capturing everything, virtually everything we talked about, and some things that we didn't talk about. I thought this was a really-
Right, that was the next thing I was gonna bring up, is that I did take the liberty of putting a few things on there. I think that heading for streets is probably a good idea at this moment in time for projects that should be done. That can, you know, I wasn't sure I was gonna get it on the agenda in time for the meeting today, but I don't see any reason why you can't approve that if you want to, if you like it, or we can take it and put it on the next month's agenda, and that would be-
Oh, goals.
The goals for 2018.
A lot of these types of documents are living documents anyway, but-
I read it, looked good.
Yeah, I don't, I have no problem with the, with the amendments on to it at all.
I have approval of the New City Goals for 2018.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Emergency services.
I attended the Westland Emergency Operations Group meeting on January 22nd, the meeting materials aren't in there. There were a lot of, they're putting together a lot of training, I already told you about the warning that we received regarding the combination of a Keen Tide and a Supermoon at the same time being linked to subduction zone earthquakes, which of course was evidenced by the fact that we had two earthquakes, one in Alaska and one at either end of the subduction zone, which was kinda scary for a couple of days, but I think we've eked out this year. Aries Races is working with, on what they call Wi-Fi mesh network, which really sounds interesting, and we'll learn more when we learn more on that sort of thing. Also, I attended a, by invitation only, a tsunami training protocol establishment, what day was it? It was a, oh, Monday afternoon, it was Monday afternoon. And that was with Lane County's emergency, you know, Linda, who, and all of the local agencies, and we talked about tsunami advisories, watches, and warnings, and what kind of notification do we think should take place. The decision was that if it is a watch, while it's an advisory or a watch, no notification will go out, but if a person wants to be notified in the event of an advisory or a watch, they can certainly contact the tsunami organization, and we can provide them with that information to get those warnings, otherwise, I mean, those notices. Otherwise, if it is a tsunami warning, that means imminent danger there, everybody is going to be out trying to contact everybody and doing the evacuations and all that. It's just that a lot of people were very upset that they didn't get notice of the last, one, last, another earthquake.
Is that a warning, how'd that go out?
No, it was, it was a watch.
A watch.
It was a watch, and before, there was even a decision at the county level, which involved the local first responders, not to send out the warning, the warning, I mean, not to send out the message, the notice, the watch had been canceled. So that's the problem with making that decision, do we send it out on a watch? You send out this notice, you get everybody running to their evacuation centers, and then it is canceled before they even get there. And I've got all these people out in the middle of the night in the pouring rain.
Social, social media works faster than they do.
Yes, social media does, unfortunately.
Yes.
Work faster than they do. So anyway, that was a really interesting afternoon, talking about those sorts of things.
All right, your next one, City Administrator, reporter, what do you have to say?
You know, normally, this is the time a year when buildings slows down, which is of course not the case this year. We're busy as ever, we have Denise LaFerrari onboard now, Debbie was offered a very lucrative job in another state, and so she took it, and I don't blame her. But CAC has met on the 24th, and the Planning Commission met on the 25th, they, well, you can read the report, it has to do with marijuana too. And like I said, Debbie resigned. House Bill 4086 is regarding the building codes and inspection. The way the bill is currently written, it requires cities to hire a building official or appoint someone who's already on staff to be the building official, but that person has to go to Salem and go through training in order to get the name, the title of building official. A lot of small cities are balking at that, and so I'm not sure exactly how it's going to come about. They said something about possibility of being able to contract, like, say, we could contract with the City of Florence and use their building official as our building official under NIGA or something. So, anyway, we'll wait and see how that washes out with that little tech budget this year. The auditors, you know, water usage for the city's shared domestic water supply program was reported at just over 12 million gallons. I want people to understand that that equals about .03 cubic feet per second. There's been information going out, oh, they used over, you know, 12 million gallons. Well, yeah, it sounds like a lot, but it really isn't.
Right.
It really isn't all that much. Our permit allows for a 1.4 CFS, and this is .03.
Wow.
We're ready.
Good to the order.
Cassidy?
Nothing, sir.
Meeting for seemingly the last two full days, even though it was taxing, I think those were productive meetings, and I felt like the attendance that we had was a lot better last night than the night before, but I still think those were worthwhile opportunities. And I would like to point out one more time that, you know, we're being televised, you can, you can watch this live at home if you don't wanna be here, but, you know, the more input we have, the better representation we're able to give, so keep ours-
Bell's.
On the Darling Resort, did we wanna follow up?
It's up to you, Mr.
I would like to, if we had the money to match what we were last year.
All right, do we have a motion?
Some.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's passed. Thank you. Tom, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Glad to see you back, live.
Thank you.
You look like you need a cheeseburger, but I don't know. Doing good.
Gotta grab the cheeseburger.
Nothing. Thanks. All right, and in that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned at 6:41.